Sheriff, you got us open. CJ Bright will open this up for a quick.
Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here today to conduct Union County business. I'm over this last two. I was pleasing to you and make decisions that are mine from in your honor. Lord, I do miss and that Hickey and her family during this time of loss and mourn with the death of her mother. And let us keep all those that are suffering and having loss. Just be with us and lead God and direct us. In your name I ask you, amen.
All right, we got the consent agenda. Approval of statement of expenditure for tax office for June 2023. Approved statement of expenditure for Sheriff's Department in Yale for June 2023. Approved the mail log for June 2023. Approved playing copy for June 2023. Approved the board minutes from June 2023. Approved road department work schedule for July 2023. Approved solid waste restroom from June 2023 and approved medical exemption fees. Motion by CJ.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. What?
I wait by him.
Oh, you ready? Okay. I thought I seen you. Did we make a face time? CJ said he saw it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I, it's approval of allocating the fourth quarter budget for the tax office sheriff's department jail budget. Need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Who from the same? Second by Randy. All in favor? Motion carries.
I.
Ah, okay. You ain't gotta say nothing. We know you that. All right.
Okay.
Just.
Something against us on this one, no?
Just say no, okay.
Otherwise I'll just be here.
I'm cute. Discuss resolution of support for grant funding for light gas and water. We gonna skip that one.
I got it.
Okay.
The support.
Discuss resolution for support for grant funding, light, light gas and water and broadband project.
I'm ready to motion.
Motion by CJ.
Second.
Second by Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. amend the bu- budget approximately seven thousand for consumable supplies for election department.
No, they had it in the wrong spot. We was two thousand dollars over and some office supplies and balance and stuff.
Yeah.
She's got a ball that pipe at this time. But we just want to make sure we don't have to amend it again so we hook that little bit. Cover that two thousand and we'll put some more in there for next time.
I got a statement. Which one you done?
Where on B. You got that one approved. I make a motion.
Motion by CJ.
Yep.
Second by Sam. All in favor? Motion carries.
Can be keeping up back there with you.
Approval of 4H employee supplement.
All right, that's something, man. We're, uh, uh. Jay and then sent me the other day and they hadn't been paying. It's in the budget. They hadn't been paying this 4H agent. Uh, I used to have two. They're gonna add one. They're just gonna move some money around in the budget. It's gonna cost you a little bit more on matching. But she told me, uh, Virginia told me a thousand dollar or something like that, but, um. It's, it's, it's in the budget, but except for, I get a thousand dollars or something like that.
All right, well, I need a motion.
What motion?
Motion by Sam.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. Altera- uh, employment for Stephen Bagwell, solid waste. Motion by Sam.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. Then we go to the circuit clerk. Uh, approval of court fees.
I'm ready to my.
Motion by CJ. Second by Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, we gonna start on EMA. Let's see. Discuss, discuss paying for travel for EMA search and rescue. Uh, divers on August eighth through tenth. But tail hound, tell them, tell them Alabama. Anybody who go with them die.
I don't have anybody, but I don't.
You don't go? Do you wanna make a motion to send somebody? All right, motion by Steve. Second by Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. Uh. Approval of manual check for truck cannons for seventy thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. And a bid from Air Truck Equipment for nine thousand four hundred forty-two dollars and fifty cents.
That's the truck you got a hundred percent of, right?
Yeah.
Cover, right. I make a motion.
Motion by CJ.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor?
We just run out of grant time. We're gonna do manual check. There's gotta be.
All right, now we got approval with the sheriff.
Well, you got, you did manual check.
Yeah.
Two thousand dollars also.
I got on this.
You got the road. I'm getting ahead of myself. Go ahead.
I got on this.
I'm just gonna share.
Go to share.
There is a sleeve.
I gotta take any paper, Joe. Yeah. Approval of inventory deletion for body camera, sheriff's department, pressure washer, steel loop handle tremor and a steel backpack roller. Motion by CJ.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, you need to do that done next. You done that.
You got that.
I got it. All right, I need approval payroll and employment for Saber, Katelyn Scott, part-time dispatcher.
Make a motion.
Motion by Steve. Second by Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. We gonna skip A right on road department. Uh, be approval of manual check two thousand dollars for Chisum and Chisum Construction Company for cleaning the ditches and trailer removal on County Road 224.
Make a motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by CJ. All in favor? Motion carries. Hey, I may have signed it in the wrong place.
We wiped it out. I guess you said.
Did I sign it wrong place?
You said go to the other one. You didn't sign that one very often. Listen, there you did it right.
I don't know where I been, sir.
Oh, you got two of them both.
Yeah, I got that three ago. I was dropping ball. Where's the net? Okay.
Number seven, uh, tax office.
Oh. Approval of travel and lodging for Henry Donald to attend the MACA summer conference from the Luxon.
That's next week, July tenth through thirteenth. Do I need to go? Yeah, we get all the legislative changes.
Make a motion.
Will you pay attention, Wayne?
He's a good.
Motion, motion by Sam. Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. Uh, approval of petition for reduction and increase in assessments. This is pretty regular.
It is. Um, the increases that we have are due to their homestead was disallowed because the state found they had filed in two counties. So we took their homestead off for here in Union County. And the reductions, it was just one, and it was a homestead that was related in error.
I'll make a motion. Motion by CJ.
Second.
Second by Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, then we need approval to reimburse because we owe somebody over paying taxes in the right.
Well, no, there was a mapping error and she was charged more because we had the acreage incorrect. So we are going back for our three years to have her and it's a total of twenty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. So it's, it's a manual check request. So it's covered in my budget under what's called the restitution. Um, where if we make a mistake that we, we correct that.
Make a motion. Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Sam. All in favor? Motion carries.
Uh, remember last, um, meeting, we discussed an extension and we did have to do that. We couldn't get everything done. We do have several industries that have requested, um, an industrial exemption. But that goes through the net's office also. So we're gonna put that off till next meeting since we have filed for an extension, a thirty-day extension. It makes it really hard for budget and. And appeals for their taxes, but, um, other counties do it, so we just worked through it.
So to be clear, will we have the line roll in the next meeting or?
We asked for a thirty-day extension, so August first. Uh, we hope we could have it by the next one, but the state only gives you the thirty day or sixty day. So hopefully we'll have it by the next, next meeting.
Got my fingers crossed.
It's been crazy in that office since December, all the.
We need, uh.
Changes.
Need executive.
We need to go in executive session. I need a motion going to executive session.
I don't want no motion, huh?
Sheriff, you got us open?
Yes.
Um, Steve Washington gonna open this up for the court and branch.
Y'all bow in place. I'm gonna scratch your head when Father do what we thank you for the other day. Father, the many blessings of life that you stole upon us today that we so wanted to serve you, dear God, was, were so faithful. Dear Lord, I just ask you to be with the sick. I just want to give them the most wanted help to be thy will. Lord, the brokenhearted, the lost loved ones, Lord, I just ask you to wrap your loving arms around them, dear Lord, and comfort them. Your Lord, just let them know that you're still there. Lord, I just thank you for each and everyone in this room. I just ask a special blessing upon each one and their families, Lord. Oh, we just ask you to watch over and bless the law enforcement firefighters, dear God. Just give, just protect them, dear Lord. Just put that edge protection around all of them, dear Lord. While as we go into this meeting, I just ask you, Lord, that you grant us wisdom, knowledge and understanding, dear God, that we conduct business in a Godly manner, pleasing unto you. I ask you, Lord, to forgive us of what many sin, for as these things in Jesus' precious and holy name. Amen.
Mr. Gio, not coming. We got this young man over here.
Yes, sir.
You mean, you want, you here to speak?
Yes, sir. How y'all doing?
You in Global Life?
Yes, sir. I'm on Global Life. You go, sir. Everyone doing all right this morning?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, of course, thank you all for allowing me to come and speak to you all. Thank you especially with you. For allowing me to come in. Uh, my name is Jermaine Brown. I'm with Global Black Liberty Nation. And, uh, what we are, we are Section 125 company located here in, uh, Mississippi. Um, I am aware that you guys already have benefits already in place and you probably already have, uh, Section 125 also in place. I'm not here to change what you guys are currently offering, but just wanted to be a add-on benefit. Me and my company, we're located in the outer ranch. Uh, of course, you know, we, we run the whole area. Uh, we do work with municipalities, counties, cities, school districts. Throughout the state and of course through many others, but particularly here in my home state of Mississippi. And also, uh, we do, uh, have Monroe County, uh, Quimby County, uh, just to give you those of mine that I, that I do have. And so I wanted to, uh, just speak to you guys briefly and not take up much of your time about what we offer. We do offer, uh. What you guys already know in one, uh, 125 plan is, uh, critical illness, cancer, uh, accidental and accidental death. I particularly want to speak to you guys on this page right here about our, um, unique life benefits. It is, uh, the next page almost to the, the last page before. This is our group term product. It's called a group term 100. Unlike most, uh, group term products that are offered in the workplace, they tend to go up in, uh, increase in premiums as the employee retires. It either, uh, decreases in face amount or it terminates altogether once, once they leave employment. With us, our product is permanent. We cover the employees to the age of a hundred and twenty-one. It has a paid-up option at the age of sixty-five. It's the most permanent form of life, uh, group term life insurance on the market. Also, it is pre-taxable. Uh, the first fifty thousand dollars is pre-taxable and therefore it saves the employee and the county valuable tax dollars. It never increases in, uh, premiums, never decreases in face amount. It is portable, therefore when the employee retires, it goes with them. Or if they, uh, decide to, uh, take on another job, it follows that. It doesn't belong to the county. All it is is that you just write, you, uh, just. Let us know that, hey, this employee left. We take care of it from there. Also, um, like I said, it has a paid-up option at the age of sixty-five. The very minute they turn sixty-five, their premiums are done. Covers them to the age of a hundred and twenty-one. So no one that I know of offers a product like this on the market, uh, it, like I said, it goes up in value, uh, as they get older. Ours never increase. Hey, how are you?
Yes, sir.
And all I would ask, you know, is that I would love to represent the county here, uh, to be your, your benefit coordinator for this product. All we ask is that you offer this to each employee through payroll deduction and that allowing us the opportunity to come in and service your employees. I'm, I'm over for any questions.
Have you got any, have you got any cards you leave us?
Well, I, I had one that I, that I, I actually found this morning, uh, for, for, for Mississippi. I've. I've been in board meetings for the last, uh, three weeks and I, I've been getting cards out left and right. Yes, sir.
Okay, well, it sounded like a pretty good deal. Well, check into it a little further. We got your room if we need to. Got any questions?
Okay. Well, thank y'all so much. Y'all have blessed day and blessed me.
Thank you. Thank you, man.
Yes.
It's nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you as well. Y'all take care.
All right, we gonna start with the county administrator. Well, look, you could live the honor. But I don't know what was the percentage. He down eighteen percent of life left. CJ's got the figure on how long it may live. He's COVID. He got about seventeen, seventeen percent of life left.
Sixty-seven.
So they owe me one. That's probably a week's money.
All right.
We got on range. That is scary, that was, Rick.
What?
Seventeen percent. Well, CJ tells non-truths sometimes. That's all I'm saying about that one. He's looking at some bad information.
All right, well, we gonna start with the county administrator. Uh, he, we got to accept the Union County school budget and tax request.
And I don't think there's a change much.
No, they have to submit that every year.
Yeah.
Motion by CJ. Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. Approval of a manual check two hundred forty-seven dollars to the state treasurer. She made a.
Well, it's.
Somebody made a third quarter.
Well, you can see the sound of it.
Motion to approve. Motion by Randy.
Second.
Second by Sam. All in favor? Motion carries.
Cause you know I love messing up. I can't write.
All right, we gonna go to Miss Annette. Uh, approval of county budget comparison report for June 2023.
I want to see it. CJ like. No, it doesn't look like, I mean, it looks, it looks like a bridal dress. Everybody's human.
I'll say. Motion by CJ, second by Randy. All in favor? Motion carries. Approval of budget increase for transferred court judges.
I shouldn't have put judges in there, but it's maybe for their staff, because we don't have, we don't pay the judges. But the court staff is provided for through all the eight counties. Chain, first chains report district services, eight different counties. And each does a percentage to pay for the court porter and the staff that's for the judges. So there's been a budget increase because we've had two of the court staff that have retired and we're needing to increase it. A total, our part, it's a total of nine thousand dollars per year. For the two. Overall, it's nine.
We got rid of some, but it's gonna cost us more money after the budget.
Yes, and the reason why is because the ones that they had, they weren't, they weren't attorneys. They were just the staff. But now we have, each of the judges have an attorney as their staff. So they have a staff attorney, not a staff administrator or a staff. Paralegal, their attorneys.
If there's something judges decided to do.
Well. They decided to do, yes, they, they're requesting that it be done.
They're, they're like four or five employees.
Yes, they have four.
And each county is gonna be increased that way?
Yes, each.
I don't think counties are all.
All of them, yes.
How much more?
Nine, nine thousand. Now, I don't know the total that each of the staff attorneys receive, uh, over their annual income is. I just know that the judges have asked that we agree to pay an additional nine thousand dollars per year for, for this.
She ain't got much else to do yet.
One good thing about it is it had, they have an ask for increase before. I mean, I know in the past fifteen years they haven't. And they really have. So, cause they've had, they have had the others that have provided the services, but they weren't attorneys. So it helps them when, it helps when they're an attorney, the staff attorney. So we've had to get replaced too. So that's why it hurts a little bit more. But we haven't had to, I know with fifty, well, no, with sixteen years, we haven't had to.
Make a motion to approve. Second. Motion by Randy, second by Steve. All in favor? Motion carries.
This is the letter. It's a question that you decided.
All right, moving on to circuit clerk. Approval of election commissioner per deemed playing.
Motion.
Motion by Steve. Second by Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. Approval of circuit clerk payment for services is registered. Registered.
I don't like a motion.
Motion by CJ.
Second.
Second by Randy. All in favor? Motion carries. Moving on to the coroner. Oh, she's got thirteen medical, signing the fees.
I looked at her. Motion to approve.
Yeah, I looked at her too. Motion by Randy. Second by Sam. All in favor? Motion carries.
Was it just AM that on these thirteen, there were actually eleven that she, she, uh, Pam provided. But these are two that Tracy provided as deputy coroner. And so you, you saw those two? Well, definitely not. I think, she gives them to me separately, so I thought she'd get. Awesome. Thanks. Good to you.
Okay, then she's got some manual collections.
She has a radio, a pipe rider, a mortuary tie.
I'm making a motion. Motion by Sam.
Second.
Second by CJ. All in favor? Motion carries.
And this is the same thing, we just have to.
All right, we gotta move on to Fire Department. Approval of a manual check for three hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred dollars for a fire truck. Motion to approve. Motion by Randy. Second. Second by Sam. All in favor? Motion, K. Sir.
Where'd it go?
Uh, this is going to the center. The truck is currently in Olive Branch and they're gonna finish it up either this week or next and deliver it.
That's quick, Amber. That's quick. I didn't know we ever got one that quick.
That's the one you took, it's all in the hot.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one's, uh, been ordered since last year. It's just now coming.
So this is like the one we discussed, okay?
That's the next item.
Like this is the big one.
Uh, the next item is for East Union.
Uh, approval of application for the rural truck, fire truck, uh, assistant approval, and this is what you was talking about in the back. Pretty much you just, we're just giving you the permission to fill out. That's right.
We have to apply after through the.
And see if we get it, and then if we get it, we're gonna go ahead and order one, or they keep going up.
Yeah.
All right. Motion by CJ.
Second. Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion, K. Uh, Road Department, we got, need to discuss some quotes received on coverage.
We have one from G and O Supply for a total of forty-one thousand, six fifty-six point eight oh. Four one, six five six, eight oh. The next one is Coburn's, C O B U R N, about to begin, for forty-three, eight twenty-five, four twenty. Four three, eight six five, four two oh.
Which one is wrong?
Uh, yes, G and O.
How much for that? Four three.
Forty-one. Forty-three, eight twenty-five, twenty. First one's forty-one, six fifty-six, eight.
Motion by Sam, we'll take the low bid on the, for G and O.
I'm second.
Randy, second. All in favor? Motion, K. Uh, approval of professional service contract with Kimco on roadside visitation management.
Okay, we have that. This is covering three hundred and twenty-three point four-four miles. Which is the rate of ninety-three, one-two, twenty-four per mile. For a total of thirty-five.
Got it. Is that spraying the lambs or is that spraying?
No, that's the roadside.
Roadside.
Okay. Okay. I'm worried about. Motion by CJ.
The lambs, that's, that's not just round up killing, we're grass saving, they're killing weeds on it.
Right.
That's, they inject spray when they get to where they need to be. They change their chemicals just like a flip of a switch, we can't do that.
Motion by CJ, second by Randy, all in favor? Motion, K. Approval of a purchase of a John Deere tractor on state contract. Motion to approve. Motion by Randy.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion, K. Is everybody in favor?
And we, we had one that gets totaled out, so we had to replace it. I had this broken handle.
I wish y'all. Raising roundup on it too. Approval of using alternate bidder for liquid asphalt.
Back when we accepted the, the little bid for the liquid asphalt, we had, we approved an alternate bidder. And we chose this one because. Well, the alternate bidder wasn't able to get there on time or something. Terry, help me.
Well, that happened a few times, then we got, we got a load of bad.
Got a load of bad.
Motion.
They've been late on several occasions.
The other bidder, they had timely, they were having trouble with timely delivery and on one occasion delivered an unacceptable product, so. There we go. So we're, we're sitting, we, we just need to place some of that, it's just saying, you have already accepted and approved the second, the alternate bidder. But now I'm just, we're making it known that we don't use it as an alternate bidder.
Motion by Sam.
By doing this, can we still use a regional bidder also?
If you.
Well, you can only use the alternate bidder.
If you primary bidder can't supply it.
If you choose to use a different product than what you have a problem with.
Right, oh, yeah, I should've said.
Another, another product.
Another product.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I may ask you to tell everybody if one's enough.
Yeah. Good question. I think it's second. Second by CJ. Oh, Sam. CJ, you make the second. All in favor? Motion, K. Moving on to the sheriff. Approval of longevity paid crease for.
It should've been Chris, not Christ, sorry.
For Christ's souls.
Yes, that, that's my.
Christopher.
And if you want to do all of them, if everyone agrees on, please, you put those two together.
All right, and Tommy Sloan.
What a motion.
Motion by Steve.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Second by CJ, all in favor? Motion, K. That's A and B. And that's good.
It is good. TJ, here.
Six.
Tell me I'm wrong. Okay.
You ain't seen this bottle again.
No.
You got even a bar.
Some big sex here.
Bottle hash, bro.
That's people different ways.
Approval of full-time employment for Shelton Reed Oaks. He has a certified deputy, that's the boy from Bull, so everything worked out, okay.
Hear that?
Deputy Carter's out. He was back there. And just, did you see?
You brother.
What's you? We need a motion.
It was CJ.
CJ.
And that's second.
Second by Randy. All in favor? Motion, K. Approval of inventory deletion on a wreck two thousand and fourteen Ford Explorer. Motion by Sam. Second by Randy. All in favor? Motion, K. All right, tax assessor collector. That would be Miss Higman. Approval of surrender tag list for June two thousand and forty.
That was gonna be the tax note.
And then a motion. Motion by Randy.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion, K. Discuss granting free industrial avalanche tax exemption for ten-year exemption.
This is the same as what we had in June. They were just like getting done for, um, Toyota Two Show, JJ RP. And Southern Motion, they already have their ten-year exemption. But because of the mandated update, so to state, their assessed value increased more than what was on their ten-year exemption. It was not their fault that it increased, so we have to ask, do y'all want to grant that extra exemption for them? Since it was due to our mandated increase.
How much money is all that?
We, didn't we do this already?
You did it already for one, yes. Um, so for Two Show, it's three hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Um, JJ RP was a hundred and eighty-five thousand. And then I don't have anything for the last one to show what it was. Uh, Southern Motion.
What is forgiveness, we agree to that?
Well, we've already given it to them. Uh, but in the paperwork, they were assessed at whatever value, but now with the new assessment rules, states that they work on, and what we granted have a long exemption for it.
So the sense value, which is not that high, it's just the way that it's.
They'd rather be taking that away from them.
Right, right.
As we thought, you do this, we give you an extension in the United States, and they work more than what we granted have a long exemption for it. Just for, they stay within the same term, that's already given off.
And you know, the last one only had one more year of the exemption, um. I don't know when these expire.
When they expire, they'll make it up.
Right, right. Um, Southern Motion's probably still will have a good bit of time left on it. Uh, Southern Motion was seventy-five thousand.
I'm making a motion. Motion by CJ, second. Second by Sam. All in favor? Motion, K. All right, so now we need approval of two thousand and twenty-three industrial avalanche tax exemption.
So you have, um, the ones applying are Diversity D Tech, they have two properties doing utility. Sugarees, Bakery, Premier Foam, Metal Impact Cell, Master Built Products. Daxton Furniture Industries, Fusion Furniture, Plant Two and Plant Three, Homestead Furniture. Albany Industries. Cooper Electrical Controls, Blue Springs Metals, and Abby Manufacturing. They have requested a ten-year exemption, um. The, through investigating what they applied for, all were approved in the amount they needed. Um. Other than Sugarees, they requested one thing that doesn't qualify. Premier Foam requested one thing that doesn't qualify. I think those were the, I might say, but I'm not different. Mm-mm, um, they have, um, the one that qualified. Um, Homestead requested something that didn't qualify. And then. Um, one requested on a vehicle that doesn't qualify. So you thought it was.
In D I P, they have one that, they have software, they asked for all of the other things and some other stuff, so. We're trying, we're not, we're not letting them have to make anything happen.
So all they've asked for, you, you have approved?
Mm-hmm, they qualify for the amounts that they requested, that's what I know.
I'm making a motion to approve. Motion by Randy.
Sir.
Second by Sam, all in favor? Motion, K. All right, we ready?
Uh-uh, you should have this one. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm a little old age today, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Approval of contract with Tri-State Consulting Services for mapping.
This is the same thing we had last year, um, when Christie retired, we had to use them and, um. Caleb McDonald had just finished school in May, he was hired in June. But he doesn't have any certification to take this over, um. Because of his hire date, he cannot be certified with the state to take this over until he finishes his classes. Certified appraisal school is only offered in May, so he had missed that, so. We have to still have this contract to be covered for the state, for the mapping and the day of grading.
Motion by Randy. Second by Steve. All in favor? All in favor? So. Will they do the jail? Do they do that once a year?
You, the state only requires it to be done every fourteen years.
Well, I'm kidding, that's the reason, I, you remember, you tell them that? So I asked that question. She said in one year. No, I just wondered, I just wondered forward, I guess.
Now, our maps are updated, but you don't have the visual changes.
Up and down, what I'm saying.
Right, right.
But you know, that, that's, that's a bad, not a lot, a person like me, who, a person like me that bought their property. And that showed, that you showed a house that no somebody else had property, and they don't correct it for fourteen years?
Fourteen years.
Fourteen years, the way we, the way we're doing it.
We don't do that.
Not on that, they correct theirs every year. They gotta follow, it gets corrected every year, we do it every fourteen years.
Um, they did pass legislature that it will. We don't have to budget as much anymore, because they broke the state in the thirds, whereas they were only doing eight to ten counties at a time. And you would go together to pay for that, because the state has changed it to the thirds, it doesn't cost your counties as much. But still, the state only requires it to be changed.
You can do it.
Yeah, you can do it, Moller, but you pay it for it.
What made, what made me think about it, because I had this place sold. Well, he was from Kentucky, don't, uh, move, he don't, actually don't open up a, something in Oxford, you know, he moved to Kentucky. I had it sold, so he pulled that up, and he scared, which was scary for me to do, even though I had it, certainly. So I had to have, paid it out, so it's still pretty done, but, e- anyway, what was bad is, it's been fourteen years.
So yeah, that's, that, that's something y'all will have to decide on, if you want to have it done or not.
It's not a bunch of situations, I'm sure, it's like it, but I don't know how close any of it, but, anyway, that's just a situation I got in, I got, and I remember telling him fourteen years, and I, I went there and I was talking to him, so. She's replying, Sil, we're Sil. She said, now we do it every year, and then we don't, you know, but I didn't realize it.
Hey, different companies do that, but I think Union County has always stayed with what the state has done for fourteen years, and didn't pay taxes to have it flown well.
In other words, if you look in the info, don't go by what you see in the info.
Right, now, it does show you the changes in deeds, but there may still be a mobile home on that property where a house has been built, and a mobile home has been moved. Or, for instance, in my neighborhood, I think there are only two houses on the map, the other is empty property, but houses have been built, they are six-way last year.
Used to, you come back in, there's s- somebody in here all family, that might, that'll be used this right here.
Right, and that's another thing, um. They're saving money in other counties by providing a computer to look up the properties they're investigating. And printing it off in the office, and not having the big heavy books, because the books and the printing of those big maps cost so much money. They just switched over to more technology and doing it better.
I mean, something just make looking through.
I heard.
All right. Big Six, you getting it?
You didn't hit that.
I can, I can grab that.
Not, we get, we need a motion to the government Monday, August seventh, two thousand four, three, we have motion for Randy. Second by Sam, all in favor?